High school come out last night.
What my almost forty.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Can't it's not real good either?
No. They lost their points, so they they're going to.
Oh, really?
We look good.
Did you? Wow, cool. That's a lot of points.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, the women and the girls went to.
Do they?
Yeah.
They got a pretty good team, don't they?
There you go. Yeah.
Good.
They play about ten girls.
All right, Steve Fresh.
Yeah.
I see Sioux Falls Christian got beat by West Central. Right.
At nine o'clock in the call meeting order, we'll start with pledge allegiance.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mokler.
Here.
Packard.
Eric.
Here Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none approved agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion and a second and further discussion. Hearing none roll call.
Hammond.
Here.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes, Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes approved minutes.
Move to approve the minute.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Are there visitors to be heard? Kelsey?
Members of the county commission, I'm visiting you today.
Microphone.
Is it up?
There we go. I'm speaking to you in my role as mayor of Vermillion, but I want to make it clear that I don't necessarily speak for the other eight members of the city council. Specifically, I want to address some of the statements that were made at last week's county commission meeting and similar sentiments that have been appearing in this body's minutes over the last several months. When members of this commission say things in public meetings like I don't trust the city or I know who runs the city, but it isn't the council. You are not only disrespecting me and the other duly elected officials who make policy for our community. You are doing a disservice to the nearly 12,000 people, seventy-eight percent of your constituents that we jointly represent and whose best interests are relying on our cooperation. I hear or read things about what the city supposedly did or said, and they are things that never took place in a meeting that I presided over or in conversations that I was a part of. The city is accused of not working with the county, and yet I have never had a member of this commission other than Dr. Smith reach out to me on any of the topics being discussed. I'm not sure who is being chosen to represent the entire city of Vermillion in the eyes of the commission, but it does not appear to be its democratically elected representatives, who are your counterparts. These statements, like the minutes that you just approved, are published in the record with no opportunity for context or rebuttal. As you know, Vermillion is governed by a city manager form of government. The city manager and staff are beholden to the people of Vermillion as represented by the city council. Remarks at the last commission meeting suggested that the city staff and council are at odds or that the staff is not working under the direction of the city council. Nothing could be further from the truth. And to imply such corruption or malfeasance or to condone remarks that do so undermines all of us. These issues are not city versus county. The city is in the county. Obviously, we have some major work to do to improve this relationship. And I am, I know we all are and have been ready to sit down and do that work, but in the meantime, I would respectfully ask that if you have a problem with something that I or the council have done, that we talk about it like community leaders and not air our grievances and resentments in public meetings. Thank you.
I just want to quickly support the mayor's statement. I think that we have a responsibility as representatives to air any dirty laundry privately and work through problems rather than publicly. And it doesn't help the city move forward on issues when we have public discord. So I hope that we can go forward. We have another a number of important issues to do together. And I hope we can go forward working honestly with one another. And so I look forward to doing that, and I know the mayor and the staff do as well.
Any other visitors to be heard? Hearing none. So conservation district.
So the button's got to be on.
Up or down?
It's on.
Okay. Todd Christensen. And Mike Lynch and Bob Bone and Missy Kale. We're supervisors and Missy's our district manager for the Clay County Conservation District. And we're here today and appreciate you listening to us here and us to kind of voice our displeasure with our budget cut kind of caught us by surprise this year. We were. I guess I'll go back and give you a little brief summary history of what's been happening forever, in case you do or may or may not be up to date on it. For the last four years, we've been getting a $25,000 subsidy to the district every year to run our operations. Prior to that, we were at 35,000. And then in 2017, we kind of reorganized, went from a full-time district manager to a part-time district manager. And actually, we've been accomplishing more work in the last four years with the part-time than we were before. And you can see the sheet that Missy handed out just gives you a basic hits the highlights of the last four years of our three big projects or our three big jobs that we do. We drill acres for CRP or farmers to sign up for CRP and need a higher grass drill to seed their acres. We do, we sell quite a bit of plants and trees and shrubs over the counter. And we, if you notice from 2017, our income from that in 2017 was $2,100. Pretty small number, not a real big number of trees that got sold. But then if you turn it over and then look in 2020, we or 2021, we jumped that figure to $9,100 of income and then our expense is 4,200. So we make a little bit on it to run our operations and we get a little profit from that. So that's one area where we've really pushed and made a big effort to, you know, get more trees and handplants and plant soul. And the drill acres kind of go varies from year to year. But it's still a pretty good amount. We get do drilling for CRP. Shelter belt planning kind of is a little bit. It's not a big deal anymore, but there is a little bit every year. So. And then. Our, our mission really is to work with the NRCS, National Resources Conservation Service, to help farmers come up with conservation plans when they need it. And actually, the NRCS doesn't exist in Clay County unless there is an organized conservation district. We have to be organized and we work hand in hand together. So the farmer, if, if we didn't exist or weren't there to work with NRCS and farmers wouldn't have access to the CRP programs, wetlands, reserves programs and stuff like that for our expertise or knowledge and help them set up their conservation plans. So and then. Did you give this to us? Okay, that's so then. The codified laws that require us to be organized as a conservation district. It says. They vary little. Ambiguous. The first law says board of county commissioners may contribute funds to conservation district. The other one says funds for the operation and maintenance of the district shall be derived from the general fund of the county. Because state law requires us, you know, the counties, we're a subdivision of state government, requires us to be organized, but we have no taxing authority, unlike a school board or water basin development district. So we really just depend on our sales if we can make a little profit on our services. And then the balance basically has to come from the county. So and other sources that we kind of scrounged around for and we have go to Vermillion Basin Water Development District quite often over the years, and they've been very good to us, helping us basically with capital improvements. Like we've gone to them and they've helped us get a new cooler and a cooling unit. We updated that. It needed to be upgraded to store trees in the spring when we get them to sell to the public. Need a place to store them for a month or two. And that would needed to be upgraded and they did. They helped us with the basically all our expenses and that, right? So. I guess in the future where we're at this year, we can maybe barely scrape by with no subsidy this year. We have a little bit of exit or a little bit of profits that we, we're pretty frugal. We don't have new equipment or you can see our equipment list. It's all pretty old, require some upkeep. The drills in pretty good shape. I mean, we've kept that repaired and everything. So we shouldn't have any big expenses there, but our old pickup is getting kind of wore out. It's kind of a expense that we should probably upgraded one of these years, but like I said, where we're at is we could maybe scrape by this year with no extra help, but boy, in the future, we're gonna, we just, it's just not feasible to run the district without a little government help or a county subsidy to help us out. So we just kind of want to let you know where we're at and then. Like I said, if you have any questions about it, this is just a basic a pretty basic budget here, but if you have, if you want more detailed budget, we can get that worked up for you too and submit it to you. But this is the hits the three main highlights of where our expenses are, where our services generate a little profit and stuff. So I guess you guys have any questions for us and we sure like a commitment, maybe help us out in the future, you know? You said we're, we're, we're gonna be barely scrape by this year.
We put, we put money in, excuse me, just go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I'm the new one on the commission started in January. So I, I know the least about all of these things and, you know, I, I, you may or may not know that we ran into a serious financial crisis this year and you were by no means the only important service that was cut, but I'll, I'll say that, you know, in this thirty-eight dash eight dash fifty-five, it says any conservation district before receiving such funds shall file with the county commissioner as a financial statement for the last three years, itemizing the amount of funds received and expenditures. And I'll be honest, I didn't know who you were. And I, so I think it would be really helpful if at the end of each fiscal year, you know, when I, I, I say this as somebody who, who cares a lot about conservation. It'd be great if at the end of fiscal year, you could send us like an annual report that did have the last three years and that did say what you actually accomplished. And that would make a really big difference, I think, in terms of, you know, your.
Yeah, I'll let Missy answer that question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why, that's probably my fault and I apologize for that. I have, I kind of came into the position five years ago with no help. I mean, I was just thrown in. The person got sick and I was thrown in. I did not know that exactly. I gave it to you every three year or I gave it at a third year when was asked for. So that is my fault. I should do that and I will do that. I would love to give you a detailed list of everything that we do throughout the year and what improvements we do make to the county and stuff. So yes, a financial and a written response will be given to you.
Yeah, that, that would be great. And, and the other thing that would be helpful is if at budget time, you know, as we start budget deliberations, if you could send to Carrie Cram, the county auditor, you know, the, the required, you know, three years of financial statements with a, a letter requesting funds and how much you're requesting and what that will accomplish because, you know, in the end, what, what we did, I mean, I could tell you what our process was. It was, okay, what is non-mandatory? Almost every dime that the county spends is required. And so we got the list of non-mandatory and we pulled out a few things that, you know, like teen court where if you cut them, you have to spend way more money elsewhere. And, and then we, you know, we just said, okay, these, these are the things that would be nice, but we can't afford. But I think for me personally, and I can't speak for the other commissioners, soil conservation would say, well, what, what do they do? I mean, what, what are we paying for? What, how do they spend the money? It was just, it was a blank. So I, you know, I, I think from here and out, you know, if you could send us annual reports and then that, that formal request that complies with statute, you know, I, I, I think, you know, you, you, you're probably in pretty good shape.
Yes, I will do that. I.
Thank you for coming in, you know, giving us, you know, showing up with this so that we know where we are spending our money on and what the activities are, you know, I, I.
And that's just a few. I mean, I started to sell seed. I, I, we want to improve and progress forward and do more things. You know, so.
We've started an educational, an educational essay contest and kind of restarted that to the school kid.
And there's scholarships and stuff out there also that we're promoting more and stuff. There's a lot of stuff through the conservation district that needs to get out there more than, than it does.
Sure. No, I, the question I had to start with was, didn't we spend some money? Didn't we help on that cooler project? Yeah, I thought we.
The reefer trailer.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, we went from the trailer down to a pot, but yes, she did help with that.
Yes, I thought.
Yeah, and that was the last time that I submitted our financial stuffs to you guys was when we asked for that.
Yeah.
But yeah, between you guys and the Vermillion Water Basin, they both helped.
Right. And one of the things that we used to, we've had in the past, and you would know this, is that unless you wanted something more, wanted an increase, we didn't require you to come in with your paperwork. We didn't require you to come in with, with what was going on, if you're saying, if there was only if you wanted more money. If you wanted to increase what you were getting.
And that's why I.
Yeah, that's why she never brought it in.
Okay.
So that's why that never.
And I didn't really.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I think.
That's not correct.
No.
We, we've required them to.
We did require them.
Every year before we do our budget, you were required to bring your budget to us.
Well, I think I've always sent in like a letter, but I guess I didn't realize.
This was before you were there. This was.
Oh, okay.
The whole board came in with Connie.
Okay, see, and I didn't know that part.
But then we always, I thought we only, although the other operations were the ones that we didn't require.
Yeah, it's not, I, I mean, in this case, it's not optional. So it, it, it's, it's shell. They use, the statute uses the word shell, which means that we can't give you money unless you give us the three financial statements and a request.
Yes, and that's not a problem.
Understanding that when we set up that budget three years ago, that 25,000, unless there was a big capital expense, we were, that was.
Yeah, I didn't know there was. I didn't relate that, and that's my fault for not checking more into that.
How do you guys have checks and balances for financial accounting? And Missy, are you solely responsible for the finances?
The checks and everything are by the board.
Okay. And so then revenue or any of the things that you said, you do some sales and things like who, who's ultimately responsible for the money? The board. Okay. And is it a two signature correct deal? Okay.
And the board does not take any payment. We give this about three times, just to reiterate.
Yeah.
We love our county, even like we do, so.
I guess we can't really guarantee you anything that's gonna happen the next year because we don't know that. I mean, that's just like I can say, we don't have an idea of what's gonna happen next year. I mean, we didn't plan to do this this year. But when things had fell the way they fell, we were kind of up against it. But so, I mean, we'll certainly take you into consideration and all that, but I mean, I can't sit back here and say, because I don't want you to come back next year and say, you guaranteed me, because I can't do that. You know, I, that's something I can't do. I'm hoping that that's not going to be the case next year. I really do.
Just consider us.
We'll submit a budget, a very budget process. We'll submit our budget in the hope that, you know, we can get some funds restored.
Correct.
We really, it's a necessary function.
No, I don't disagree with that at all.
Right.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming in. Yeah.
Everybody get some vouchers?
Yes. Yes.
No.
You didn't get them?
No, I didn't.
They were in the bottom of the packet, at the end of the packet that I sent out last night. Did you get that?
Did that sound system turn out okay then? At the courtroom?
Um, has it been installed?
It better. Have we approved that one yet?
Well, it's in the bills here. It's in the vouchers. I think we approved it.
Yeah, you guys approved that because there, I think there was a signature or something that you had to sign for us.
But it was back, you know, it's in today's vouchers and that's why we've had a little bit of time to.
I know they've been up there working on it.
Yeah. Hopefully, we've had a little bit of time to use it. Is, is it satisfactory, I guess, is the question.
Well, I hope so. I guess I wasn't, I wasn't aware that it was installed already. So that's great. That's good stuff.
That means it's not working better than it was before?
Um, well, I haven't noticed different microphones or anything in that regard, so I don't know what all they've done.
I don't think it was a microphone. It was just speakers.
Yeah.
Okay, well, one of the, one of the microphones was at, and I think we switched it out. I think it started out at the fence council table and it ended up at the witness stand or vice versa. Started out at the witness stand and swapped out for the fence council table. One of the microphones was all without working.
My understanding is whatever they were gonna replace was by the corporate quarter.
Yes, that would have been the witness stand.
And there was a, something that was blown. I don't know if it was a speaker. Some piece of sound equipment that was, couldn't be repaired. Can't remember if it was like a speaker or an amplifier. I don't, I don't know enough about those things.
So maybe it would make sense to pull that one out for this week. And, you know, until we can confirm that it actually functions. Does that make sense?
Let me send a quick email to Kim Allison and see if that's been installed and done.
Yeah, and that was the only thing that I wanted to ask about. I noticed it yesterday, last night when I was going through. We had to send somebody to Charles Mix County too.
I saw that.
I noticed that too.
The. Yeah, the cost of diesel was eye popping. I went back and looked at that a few times and said, what? And then I realized it must be filling the tank at the.
Yeah. County.
When my husband needs to fill our truck, he warns me ahead of time.
Yeah.
It's painful.
Wow.
I used to, I used to pull in to pump and back or work to Brunex and with three or four trucks and leave, leave a thousand, fifteen hundred bucks behind.
Yep.
My little outfit, I think I had forty to fifty thousand a year in, in diesel each year. Yeah. It's gonna finance it for us.
Got about five minutes to kill before the public hearing, maybe. Kim will have responded by then.
If you'd like, Travis, I got a quick report for you.
Yeah.
Andy, sorry. Hey, I'll give my camera on here. I was gonna let you know, so you, you know, I'm sure you guys have plenty of things on your plate, but you probably don't remember that we budgeted for a new patrol car and body camera system, you know, last year to be done this year. The work was completed and but I'd actually submitted a grant request to the highway safety, office highway safety that they will help on cost of the patrol car camera part of it. So we did just this morning receive a check for $12,200 to reimburse us for a portion of that, the patrol car portion of the overall project that included body cameras. So those, I think about a sixty-five, sixty-seven thousand dollar project and and so there, you know, it's $12,000, $12,200 is, is something to help us offset that. I'll be getting that submitted to the treasurer today and it's a little bit, little bit to offset our expenses this year. That project's been completed then, and that kind of wraps it up in, in my books here.
Super. Keep that up, Andy.
I'm trying to apply for all of them I can anyway.
So actually, while, while we're waiting, I'd be curious, Andy, what the average cost of 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 daily fees for inmates in other counties has been over the last few months?
We've been pretty fortunate this year. When we did our, our budget for next year and anticipating this year, we split the difference and kind of figured on an eighty dollar per day, which is what Yankton charges, which is kind of between what Union County and Minnehaw County charge, but Union County's been very good to us. Thankfully, their, their numbers are increasing as are ours, but so far they've been able to take almost all of our inmates. We generally have one or two in another jail at any given time. But most of our inmates are in Union County at the cost of $65 a day. And, but we've been, we've been trying to hold as many as we can here in Clay County to, to a maximum of seventy-two hours. People just coming in for a short term, we'll just keep them. People that, if we think they might bond out, we maybe hold them, you know, just as long as we think we can. And so we've been able to minimize our expenses a bit by, by trying to keep people here. We are accepting and holding our own work release now. We, we, I think we only have one right now, but we just haven't had any work release sentences since we had our, our transition in the jails mission and, but now we do and, and holding our work release here, I feel comfortable with that since they're not subjected to the conditions twenty-four hours a day. And but that's one less person we're sending to another county and housing there. And so it, it seems to be, be, you know, the best that we can hope for in terms of planning for the worst and hoping for the best in these expenses. Our, our inmate population is climbing. We're seeing in the numbers in the twenties. We're seeing in the numbers in the twenties per day these days. And I think that I, I predicted we'll probably end this year with, with an average daily population for the year around 17 or and then maybe a little higher. And I think that's gonna, gonna be the case. And then I think next year we'll be into that closer to 20, which is what we, what we anticipated. So yeah, I think, I think things are pretty, going pretty well in terms of cost. I haven't been approached by Union County for any changes in that boarding rate. I don't really expect anything. I, I don't expect to, we, we do board for Turner County still on a short term because we, we receive their inmates and we'll tell them, well, we'll hold them for the day or so if, if necessary. And, but, you know, we're not getting a lot, but I, I don't expect to, to make any changes regarding that either. I do, I do hope for a good continued relationship with Turner County. If we do get a jail project approved and constructed, then I want to be able to continue to serve Turner County like we have for quite a few years now. And so I'm not really looking to, to push them out the door. Any, any assistance we can give them, we're, we're happy to do that.
That Charles Mix must be at 65 a day too.
Yeah, Charles Mix, Charles Mix is about that. We had one, I, I don't recall getting a bill from them, but we had one we were gonna house in winter. I believe he's still there, but maybe they haven't built us yet, but the Charles Mix ones, that, that housing situation wasn't as much as, wow, we can't find a bed, we have to go as far as Charles Mix, which is definitely something that we do. I mean, we, we've explored jails all over. The Charles Mix County Sheriff has assured me if we ever need a bed, he's available to us, but the distance is even farther than Sioux Falls. So we, we discourage that. What we generally house in Charles Mix County are people that are there on probation on a Clay County case that violate their probation. And then the, the court services will order them held for, say, you know, two days is typical. And then rather than drive and they violate there, rather than drive to Charles Mix County, bring them back here and hold them for the two days, even though we could hold them for the two days here. Because within 72 hours, we tend to just leave them there. That way, you know, they'll, we'll, we'll pay Charles Mix County, but we, we've avoided that transport and we don't have that person sitting here in Vermillion now on probation, but essentially homeless and needing to find their way back to Charles Mix County. So just to try to solve the problem as best we, we can, that's what we've done on those cases. I think most of those Charles Mix County holds we've had this year have just been a two and three day holds.
Yeah, and your transport cost would be more in that. Yeah, better leave them there.
Somewhat, yeah. Especially when you think that we might have them another violation because they're here with nowhere to go. And then just because maybe they can't see their court service officer then because they're stranded in Vermillion, it might be best for all just to leave them where they are. And Charles Mix County sheriffs are helpful that way.
Are you replying?
Not yet. Do you want me to call up there and ask them?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Hi, it's hearing downstairs. Say the commissioners are looking at the bills. We got a bill for the sound system.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that was something. Thought it was being part of our, I didn't know about the statute, but I had questioned that.
Oh, okay.
At the time, you know, it was one of the, there were three kinds of questions. And where the, the red field runs in here too, but it's, it's just minimal. Sounds good. That's for four clients for November for a month. That's the purpose.
Okay, thank you.
So it hasn't been installed yet?
She didn't know. It was Susan. She didn't know Jess is in court and so she won't be done until about noon. So if we just pay it at the end of the month, it'll be fine.
Sounds good.
We'll do approve.
With striking.
Strike, yeah.
I mean, I think it has been installed, but I haven't seen it, so.
Yeah, let's make sure it's working.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
She said yes.
Yeah.
You're muted, Phyllis.
I see her head move.
So now we're, we've got the public hearing for the liquor license transfer for WILFs.
I have not received, you know, anything from anybody suggesting that they shouldn't be able to transfer that license. And I think, you know, the next step is to send everything to the state and then the state reviews it to make sure that they've met all the requirements for the sales tax license and things like that, so.
So we need a motion.
Yep.
I'll motion, I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license transfer for WILFs.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And Andy filled out his paperwork on that, as I recall, so we should be in good shape there.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
That'd be okay.
Does anybody have anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, we're adjourned.